The minister is in Japan.
Yes, the deputy minister, where is the deputy minister?
He's on his way, I just called him.
The time is 2pm, we gave 2pm, so um we cannot take he's on his way. And so wherever he is, he needs to be here, so we can start as soon as possible.
I will make another call.
2pm is 2pm. Is the agenda ministry here? Is your minister or deputy minister here? Okay, that's not your time. Is the local government head of office of civil service, are they here? Um if you are here, let's take you. Do you have your full complement? Okay, let's take you. Foreign affairs, um can you give way to them? Yeah, thank you.
Uh Clark, could you swear in uh office of uh civil service?
Swear by the almighty God.
Swear by the almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That in the matter in issue.
That in the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God. Uh could you please introduce yourself to the committee and the key people who are going to answer questions?
Yeah, thank you very much Chair for the opportunity. My name is Dr. Evans Agre Dakhon, the head of the Civil Service Republic of Ghana.
Good afternoon, my name is William Carty and I'm the chief director, office of the head of the civil service. Thank you.
Good afternoon Solomon Nobi Amano, principal governance secretary at school.
Good afternoon, my name is Michael Kufinyakun, acting principal Institute of Technical Supervision.
Good afternoon, my name is Jonathan Tetelati, I'm the executive secretary of the management services department.
I'm Gregory Setche, acting head, public records and archives administration department, Brad.
Only one microphone will work at a time, so when you finish, you take it off. Uh and the chairperson, Honorable Abner Asar will be asked. Honorable Abner Asar will be asking the questions on paragraph twenty ninety-six.
Thank you very much. Minister, you are welcome. Yes, um office of the head of civil service, knowing who your head is, you shouldn't be even hold here. He's a strict and upright man. I'm hoping and praying that next time you wouldn't be cited for some of these infractions. Failure to show documentation, it runs through. It runs through all the infractions that you have been cited for on various campuses. The Accra campus, we are told that you were not able to equate some payment vouchers to the team of one hundred and seventy-five thousand Ghana cities. Can you give us an update on uh what you have done on this thing so far?
Honorable Chairperson, we have provided all the necessary documentations to the audit uh team and they have cleared the issue.
Audit service, can you please confirm?
Yeah, Honorable Chair, if you look at the report, we actually recommended for recovery of the amount. Because we thought that we have given them all the window of opportunities to respond with documents during the audits. At the exit meeting, after the exit meeting, about two weeks before we issued them their formal management letter, of which they had one month to come back to us with the documents to support the payment. So all these opportunities were made available, but the documents were not provided. When the issue is escalated into the ages report, it is no more about present documents to equate the payment. Because if you had them, you should have provided them within the opportunities that were given. But guided by the past sittings that we had, um the chairman at the time gave them the opportunity, a grace period. And that they can present the documents alright, but then going forward, we will insist on the recovery. We looked at the documents that they provided, yes, the documents acquitted the payment that was made. But we don't know the decision of the current committee regarding this matter. So we'll be guided by what the committee says, but humans and the documents acquit the payment.
So if you are in a position and you had judicise came at the time they gave you that extra month and you did not provide those documents. What, what do we say to such a situation? Unless they were all during the exit conference, I mean even after, before they even put it in the reports, they gave you all that time, yet you refuse to show it. Immediately it is put in the reports, you come up with the documentation. If you were in the issues, what would you have said?
Honorable Chair. Yeah, hello, at the time of the exercise, we were able to provide some of the documentations, but we had some challenges that made us unable to provide the documentations at the time upon request.
Can you share those challenges with us, please?
Yeah, um for example, some of the documentations had to do with issues with using the give mix, the give mix system to generate some report, um the skills to do those things at the time. And so we had to.
You didn't have the skills, but yet you had the skill to spend the money. You didn't have the skills to do the right thing, to take the money, but yet you had the skill to spend the money. Respectfully, we will stand by the protocols that have been established by my predecessor. That beyond a certain point, you have to recover. I, I, I spoke to the, um the current chair, because this happened at a time when I was in government. And so the current chair is the ranking member and we have both agreed that we will go by the protocols that have been established, was established in the eighth parliament, that beyond a certain point, if you fail to show the vouchers, uh you have to be surcharged with the amounts. And so um the auditors, um we, we will go by the existing protocols that was established in the eighth parliament. Because I believe it's all, uh is going to help us check some of these things and also give public, the public that confidence that uh once monies have been voted for certain things, they will be used exactly for those things. So um respectfully, we'll have to go by those protocols established. Thank you.
So auditors take note, they will have to refund the money. And Clark, make note of that. We've given you all this time. And then, I mean, look at it, TNT for facilitators, I mean water. Impress for GSS second day, payment for water, and you cannot give uh, what do you call it, uh? Information to the auditors. Okay, let's move on. This one you are going to refund. Uh we are giving them thirty days to pay the money. Thirty days. Uh the next infraction is on paragraph twenty ninety-eight. And Honorable Yao Ahinapaw would take that one.
Yeah, thank you Chairman. Uh this infraction is about unaccounted payments to a team of six thousand two hundred and four Ghana cities. The auditors noted from the bank statement that a total amount of six thousand two hundred and four was withdrawn from the operations account, but not supported with payment vouchers and the relevant expenditure documents as shown below in the table. The auditors recommended that the principal should recover the total amount of six thousand two hundred and four Ghana cities from the accountant and same paid into the auditor general's recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana, failing which the principal should pay. So uh principal, what is the status quo of this recommendation?
Honorable Chair, please, we have, we have paid the money. We have recovered and paid the money to the accounts.
Okay, auditors. That they, they have paid the money into the account. How true is that?
Well, we don't have the evidence of the payment. What um our regional office indicated to us was the fact that the payment was accounted for, but not recovery. Not the recovery of the amount, yes.
Now, head of civil service. What is the problem going on over there that you cannot give information to the auditors when they come there? And did you say that you paid, you collected this amount?
We have submitted the documentations in connection with the said amount to the auditing.
Why didn't you, uh when did you collect that information? When, when did you give the information to the auditing?
Um after they've done their work and issued a management letter.
I know it was after, but when? When they issued the management letter, how many days did you have to give them this information?
Honorable Chair, thirty days.
Thirty days. So what time did you give to them?
Honorable Chair, uh I can't. It was close to the time, that within, within the time.
If it was within the time, it wouldn't appear in this report. Auditors, do you have any idea what time they uh gave you that, that information, please?
Honorable Chair, it was during our follow-up and follow-up ended around eighth of this month, eighth August.
Sir, follow-up happened eighth of this month. That was when you gave the information to him. Did you swear an oath when you came in?
I did, Honorable Chair.
And what you are telling us, that you gave it to them thirty days after the audit, is that true or false?
Honorable Chair, I couldn't immediately recall the time. I was um guessing that looking at the timeframe that they did the work, at the time we presented the document, it could be around that time. So I'm sorry if that um information was inaccurate, Honorable Chair.
Sir, the unfortunate thing is, this is on live, GBC Chingu. You came in, you swore an oath to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth. So if you don't know, don't give us an answer that you gave it to them thirty days within the audit, when it wasn't thirty days with uh after the audit. All right, uh the next one is on, infraction is on paragraph twenty-one hundred, and that is uh, uh Honorable Dr. Sal, uh Jassal.
Thank you Chair, this is similar to the first infraction that they responded to and it's about unpresented payment vouchers. The auditors noted that three paid vouchers totaling about sixty-eight, indeed totaling sixty-eight thousand three hundred and sixty Ghana cities were not presented for the, for audits. They've added the three to be sixty-eight thousand, okay. So auditors, um you recommended that the principal should recover the said amount of sixty-eight thousand. Um can you confirm that this recovery has taken place? So principal, have you recovered this amount?
Honorable Chair, my documents are with the chief accountant, I'm calling him to find out how.
You mean you, you came here.
With my chief accountant.
Okay, he's here.
Yes, please, I did. Uh they, honor, uh they unpresented payment vouchers. The first payment voucher, I may, I explained to the auditor that it was not a payment or payment voucher we generated at our end. It was payment made to Ghana Government Secretary of School in line with scheme of service training offered. But what happened was that during the payment, GSS was not set up, Accra was not set up on a give mix system. So the money was paid into Kumasi GSS. Kumasi GSS then intent transferred the money into our account. So it wasn't a payment voucher generated. I explained to the team and they understood this and I provided all the documents to them. The payment from Kumasi to our account at Bank of Ghana in Accra.
Have you resolved the issue with the auditors?
Yes, please, we did.
Is that for all three cases or especially?
I've finished addressing the first issue, the second issue that I'm coming to address. The second issue is um in relation to.
So wait, wait. This is, if what you've said is in respect of the fifty-five thousand eight hundred?
Yes.
Okay.
The, the Honorable Chair, the second issue of seven thousand five hundred and sixty is car maintenance allowance. And car maintenance allowance is paid from GOG. Head of service service accounts transfers the money into our accounts at Bank of Ghana. Then with them generate the PV and paid. But what happened here is, when we generated a PV and sent it to OGM Treasury, the PV was misplaced. I followed up and followed up, we could not trace the PV. And I, I explained to the audit head, we even, we even went, I went to their offices, the same, the same premises uh with the treasury. So I went there with the head, the auditing head and he, at least he, he can testify that.
Did you say the PV got lost?
Yes, at the audit treasury, the OGM treasury.
So then how did you take the money?
No, no, they, we, what, what happened is, we will have, we, we prepared the PV and sent it to OGM Treasury for certification. But it was misplaced there. It got missing at OGM Treasury.
So then how was it certified?
Pardon me?
How was it certified then? Because you sent it there for certification.
Yes, please.
And it got lost there.
They said they have done it, but they cannot find the PV for us. They have done it, but they can't find the PV. It was misplaced there. So I explained to the auditing and they understood this.
They have misplaced their PV?
Yes, please, Honorable Chair.
So on what basis did the transaction go through?
No, this is a payment from government, like OGM accounts, who transfer the money into our account. Who would not prepare a PV to, to disbase the money? So that's what we did. But having prepared a PV, we took it to OGM Treasury, because it's GOG. So we took it to OGM Treasury for certification and it got missing at OGM Treasury.
And I'm saying that, don't you await certification before you distribute the money? Shouldn't that be the case?
Yeah, that, that should be the case.
Shouldn't that be the case, yes or no?
Yes, please, my Honorable Chair.
So you couldn't find a certified payment voucher?
Yes.
Yet you went ahead to disbase the money. Now the auditors are saying, show me the evidence. And you are saying what?
Madam Chair, I said, the honorable, uh, the audit team, uh, went with me to the treasury. And the, the lady in charge said, hon- honestly, they are sorry they can't find the PV. But we have, we had a copy, a photocopy of our own PV, but not a certified one. It is that the photocopy we show it, we show it to the auditing. Yes, the, the photocopy. Yes, please. The, our photoc, our copy is, is with the audit. I view our, our copy to the auditors. Yes.
Okay, so um auditors, what do you say to this charge?
All right, so Honorable Chair, subsequently they were able to provide some documentation. Um we had copies of the payment vouchers and we have verified them. So as we speak, those payment vouchers were presented to our office in the region and they have done the verification.
Do you say they are acceptable?
The recommendation, as I said earlier on, is recovery. But then unsure of what the decision of the committee will be, we looked at those do, um payment vouchers and we are okay with them in terms of they acquit in the payment.
Okay, Honorable Chair, I think we can go to the third issue and find out what explanation he has for that also. The third one being recoupment of electricity prepaid impressed.
Yeah, Honorable Chair. Uh we, we, we provided all the receipts to them in response to this PV. Thank you.
Uh you are already going to refund one hundred and seventy-five thousand. I won't tag this one on it. Otherwise, I would ask you to refund that one also. If you have the paperwork with you in the office, you make sure you give it to the auditors. If it was a sheet of paper you were supposed to give to the auditors for your pay to go up, as for that one. Okay, the next one, the infraction is on paragraph uh twenty-one oh three, and Honorable Suparo will hand out that one, please.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Madam Chair. Section one-one-seven of the Income Tax Act twenty fifteen, Act eight-nine-six requires that a withholding agent pay to the commissioner general within fifteen days. After the end of each calendar month, a tax that has been withheld. We noted that a total amount of ten thousand nine hundred and thirty-six Ghana cities, sixty-six persons was withheld in taxes on payment to staff and other beneficiary for various activities. However, these withheld, withheld taxes had not been remitted to the commissioner general. The auditors recommended that the principal should ensure that the amount is paid into the GIA account. I want to find out from you, what is the current status of the recommendation?
Uh Honorable Chair, as we speak, we have paid the tax into the GIA account, but let me. Okay, we have paid the money into the auditors' account, uh GIA account.
That, can, can the, can you confirm, I mean, the auditors?
Yes, Honorable Chair, we can confirm that the entire money has been remitted to the GIA.
All right.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph twenty-one zero-six, and Honorable Desmond DeGaff Payton.
Chair, thank you. This is about the fourteen payment of rent, total amount in twenty-three thousand five hundred and eighty Ghana cities. Involving seven staff who occupy the government Bangaru. As a, a matter of fact, ten percent of the salary should be deducted to pay every month as a rent. Now, after auditors' report revealed that such has not been done. So I want to find out, how is it that? So I want to find out, how is it that it has not been done? And the amount due has it been recovered and paid same into auditors' accounts of Bank of Ghana, thank you.
Honorable Chair. Uh, we, we have recovered nine thousand and thirty four Ghana cities out of the existing twenty three thousand outstanding rent, um, debt. And paid same to the auditors' generous recovery accounts, and we finished the auditor, the audit team with this information.
Why the rest has not been recovered?
Um, we have come out with a payment plan, we've spread the areas to five months. So, um, we've collected the first batch, that's what we've paid to the auditor generous recovery accounts. And we have a payment plan to recover the rest of the money, um, in the subsequent months.
Is your accountant here?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
Okay, according to the auditors, the report the accountant gave you to them stated that the principal authorized that these seven people should not pay the rent. I want to know, is it true or is not true?
Honorable Chair, I think this was misinformation, it's not true, thank you.
Auditors, can you confirm that if it is omission?
Honorable, if you can, let me know exactly where you are quoting that from. Yeah, Honorable Chair, if you may permit, I will ask the branch head, our branch head to respond to this issue, yeah.
Uh, principal, okay, okay.
Honorable Chair, my name is Abeku Kumsen. It's unfortunate that, um, the accountant will indicate here that what we have written is not true. As part of our evidence gathering during the course of the audit, we did some interviews. And as part of the interviews, that is what the accountant indicated. And we have working papers duly signed to support our claim. So for the accountant to indicate to this August House that what we reported on is not true, it's a bit unfortunate. Can make, accountant?
Honorable Chair.
Accountant?
Yes.
Do you realize that this committee has the powers of a high court?
Yes, Honorable Chair.
When you came in to, you swore an oath.
Yes, Honorable Chair.
So you tell the auditors one thing and then you tell us another thing, which is true. Did you guys tell the auditors that the principal, it was the principal of the school that told them not to pay the rent?
Honorable, if it is, uh, greater Accra, no, I did not tell the, the audit team or audit team leader that the principal has instructed them not to pay, that's, it might be a misinformation. I did not, even when the report came, I called the audit, I called the team leader that this statement, I didn't make this statement. I said, unfortunately, it has gone. I told him I didn't make this statement, because as he came to me the situation, I also came to me the situation. So I can, I, I, I could have said that the principal said they should not pay rent. I did not make that statement, Honorable Chair. Because I made, I, I, I made the audit team leader aware that, that statement, I didn't make that statement. It might be a misinformation, or he might misconstrued me in one way or the other. I didn't make that statement, Honorable Chair. I know I swore an oath.
Okay.
I don't sit here and lie.
Okay. Ministry of Finance sent a letter out, or a circular out, and it gives a number that they were supposed to deduct ten percent of their salaries for rent. And out of the twenty three thousand, you've collected just nine thousand. When are you going to collect the rest of it?
Honorable Chair, as the, my principal indicated, we have recovered nine thousand thirty four Ghana cities. The balance, we, we have come out with a payment plan for them, spreading five months. We hope by the end of the five months, you will have recovered all the amounts, thank you.
Who determines the payment plan, please? Discuss with who?
We discuss with the tenants, that this is what we are proposing.
So, um, they short change governments and then at their will, at their pleasure, they come up with, um, a payment plan to pay governments' money? Is that what you are saying?
No, Honorable Chair, it's not the tenant that have proposed the plan, it's management.
You said you discussed with them.
We informed-
Uh, Mr. Accountant, you keep changing your positions, remember you under oath. I just asked you and you said you conferred with them and based on that you have come up with a payment plan, and I'm saying that they go ahead to short change governments and now they determine at will, when they want to pay governments' money back to governments. This is unacceptable. Respectfully, you will have to recover the money within the thirty days that has been stipulated by this committee and show, and bring the receipts of payments to the auditors' attention for onward submission to the Public Accounts Committee, thank you.
Noted, Madam Chair, we are grateful, thank you.
Chair, thank you, I think, uh, yeah, it's finished, once you conclude, let's leave it like.
Thank you. Uh, the next infraction is on, uh, paragraph twenty one twenty three, and Honorable Chair, you will take that one.
Um, thank you, Honorable Chair. This infraction is to do with unrecovered storage fees. Um, the auditor noted that sixty five institutions whose storage, wherever the department failed to pay the annual storage fee totaling four hundred and eighty three thousand seven hundred and sixty one cities. The auditors recommended that the director should instruct the accountant to recover the full amount. Management indicated that they are making efforts to recover the amount. Can you please brief the committee on the status of the recovery, please?
My name is Gregory Septimo Searcher, acting head, public records and archives administration department. My name is Gregory Septimo Searcher, acting head, public records and archives administration department, Pratt. Mister Chair, we have been able to recover one hundred and eighty six thousand five hundred and thirty four cities, eighty persons out of the forty eight, four hundred, four hundred and eighty three thousand seven hundred and sixty one thousand seventeen persons. Represented thirty eight point five, thirty eight point fifty six percent. Recovery effort is still ongoing to recover the rest of the two hundred and ninety seven thousand, two hundred and twenty six cities, thirty eight persons. Um, so Mister Chair, this is the update of our recovery efforts.
Can the auditors please confirm that the said amount has been recovered?
Honorable Chair, we have a total recovery of two hundred and nine thousand seven hundred and seventy point two zero with outstanding balance of two hundred and seventy three thousand nine hundred and ninety point nine seven. Our is, uh, most updated, uh, what do we call, status that we have. I think he mentioned a lower figure compared to what we have.
Sir, see, that shows the committee that you didn't come prepared. The auditors have a higher amount that you have recovered than you do. But you see, what is worrying is, you are collecting these from EcoBank, Bank of Ghana, Siraj, Ghana Investment Promotion Centre, Ghana Education Service, Ministry of Energy, Ministry of Interior, Ministry of Health, Ministry of Transport, Ministry of Tourism and Cre- and you cannot collect from these people? These are not individuals, these are ministries. So how much longer do we have to give you for you to recover these amounts?
Mister Chair, um, we, we will continue-
That wasn't, that wasn't the question. Give me a specific date, and that date will expect that you'd have paid the money. I think we've danced around, we'll continue too many times.
Mister Chair, um, of the belief that, uh, within two months, we should be able to do most of the collection.
Two months, noted, that's starting from today?
Yes, please, and update, uh, auditor general with the latest reports.
No, you collect two months, you collect all of it.
Um-
The balance.
The balance, we'll do our best, because some of the state institutions, uh, it's difficult to-
If you do your best to collect, we'll do our best in paying you. Give me a specific time that you collect the balance.
We look at six months, Mister Chair.
Oh, no!
What?
Yeah, the, the challenge, Miss, uh, Mister Chair, is that the state institution, um, most of them find it difficult to respond to our, so we write as a reminder to enable them, uh, fulfill their mandate.
There's one here for three hundred and thirteen cities, and you are telling us that the state institution cannot pay three hundred and thirteen cities? Sir, there's one for three hundred and thirteen cities, twenty persons, and you are saying we should give you six months to collect three hundred and thirteen cities, twenty persons?
Mister Chair, Mister Chair, I'm of the belief that by then, we should be able to collect.
We are sorry, six months, you cannot use six months to collect three hundred and thirteen cities, twenty persons, from one ministry, from the banks. Why should we give you six months to collect thirty thousand Ghana cities from one bank?
Mister- Madam Chair, with the update, I have the EcoBank has paid, because the list I have, private institutions, they are left with six institutions to pay, and all the amount-
I am speaking to the reports, look at page, um, four seven four, number twenty five, it's thirty thousand nine hundred and thirty two, and it's not in the name of EcoBank. So, um, sir, um, head of Office of, uh-
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Uh, civil service, uh, six months, no?
Yeah, um, uh, Chair, distinguished members, we, we've had difficulties, and I can understand, um, Pratt's, um, you know, predicament, you know, Pratt is one of the institutions that is, um, highly dynamic in terms of funding. They have discharged a lot of obligations in the past. And Chair, as you are aware, the, the high intervention was very critical in Ghana winning this case against, uh, with Kudwa, for instance. The records they provided proved extremely useful for, for the type of determination that the court had to make. But the stark reality is that they are really dynamic. And part of the problem is simply also because when they have even rendered normal mundane routine services to our public sector institutions, unfortunately, they have found it very difficult to pay. So I, I, so, you know, not holding brief for, for the, the, the head, but I can understand sometimes, what would you do, government to government? Finance is, the finance is on, right? The Ministry of Finance that has to even do the releases-
Bank of Ghana, eight thousand two hundred, and you are saying Bank of Ghana cannot pay eight thousand two hundred Ghana cities? For services rendered?
We, we are, we're looking at the totality, so-
Well, I, I, I'm sure the governor has heard us, and the governor will make payments.
Yeah, so I'm sure, I'm sure this, this intervention will help us, uh, we, we, so that is sometimes the problem that we've had with the government to government institutions.
I'm told Ministry of Finance owes eighty four thousand.
Yes.
I'm sure, Honorable Atofosun has heard us, and then he, he redeemed the eighty four thousand Ghana cities.
We are grateful.
But this is not a job that we should do for you.
That's, that's true.
You offer services and people should pay for the services you render to them.
Precisely.
So maybe you should also change the way and manner in which you run the place. Maybe that will bring in more money.
Well noted.
And you, you can raise more money through, and the services you offer, you offer to people.
Thank you very much, well noted.
Yes, sir.
Mister Chair, I, I think this brings out the question of internal control weaknesses. Uh, it's been very rough dealing with the infractions of, um, this particular team. And I just, with your permission, want to find out from the head of service, what internal measures he's putting in place to ensure that these infractions do not recur?
Yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity, I, it was disturbing, I mean, when I, I, uh, because as a central management agency that has to exercise oversight, I mean, these are infractions that you don't want to see, because you come into equity, you come with clean hands, for instance. So what we have decided to do, immediately when I saw the report and, and I indicated that we've had several meetings, the immediate reaction was to make a total, some overhaul with regards to the various institutions and the structures and the personnel. But I thought that let me wait for them to clear the mess, you understand? Because they cannot, if there is a mess or there are infractions, they cannot leave for others to come and clear. So I took a decision that let them stay to deal with all those outstanding issues, and then we can undertake some tree, tree and root, root and branch reforms of the personnel and sector and so on. And then, of course, the internal mechanisms, strengthening internal audit systems, and making sure that quarterly reports are received at the headquarters. Which quarterly reports would then give us indication of how well they are managing their affairs and so on. So those are the systems that I have put in place to ensure that we can monitor, so that external auditors would not be able to come and see these infractions, as we would deal with them internally before they, they are escalated, thank you very much.
Okay.
Yeah, uh, but you see, um, so I, I, I really want to find out from you, I know state institutions, eh, that, uh, rely on the services of private companies, and they are paying so much in the storage of, uh, information, their documents and all of that. So what really is the challenge? Is it with the law that establishes your authority, what is the challenge, um?
Mister Chair, the, the, the issue is that we collect storage fees by the end of the year. So when it's middle of the year, we write as a reminder, there are bills and outstanding, uh, to settle. So when we give them some few weeks and they are not responding, whilst others do, we follow up to remind them that they owe us and they have to fulfill their obligation. So the challenge is when you go, um, attempt to tell that, oh, they are working on it, you are processing it. So that's, that, that has been the major challenge for us.
You see, the, the, the reason I ask this is that you are mandated by law, there's an act that establishes, I think Act five three five, that establishes you. So you are backed by law. If private institutions are able to engage government agencies and take money from them, and they pay, and you are failing to do that, that means that you are not doing your work well. You are really not doing your work well. For me, that is the conclusion.
Okay, let's move on. Um, the next infraction is on paragraph twenty one eleven, and that is by Honorable Naokoye.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Um, page four, seven, one, paragraph two, one, one, underpayment of Bangalore rents by staff of Kofuridya. So Regulation forty-six of the Public Financial Management Regulations twenty nineteen, L I two, three, seven, eight, requests that a principal spending officer shall ensure that non-tax revenue is efficiently collected. Paragraph two, one, one, two, additionally, the Ministry of Finance Secular of fifteenth May, two O six, also requires that occupants of government Bangalos, flats and quarters pay ten percent of their basic salary per month as rent. Now, in our review, we realized that twelve staff occupying government Bangalos were underpaying their rents, resulting in difference of thirteen thousand four hundred and fourteen seven five persons yet to be recovered. Now, who is responsible at your office for ensuring that statutory deductions are affected monthly?
Honorable Madam Chair, is the principal?
And as a personal aware of Regulation forty-six of the Public Financial Management Regulations, we provide that occupants of government Bangalos pay ten percent of their salaries as rent.
Honorable Chair, that is true. Yeah, yeah, they are aware.
So would you agree with me that this infraction occurred due to negligence?
Honorable Madam Chair, the affected officers started paying, they, they were paying, but they were not able to pay the ten percent. Now, out of the thirty thousand, um, they've been able to pay eight thousand and nine sixty, leaving outstanding, um, rent of five thousand three hundred and eighteen. And, uh, based on the earlier ruling from Madam Chair, um, the rest of the five thousand will be recovered within the stipulate time given by Madam Chair.
What time did she speak, uh, what time is that?
Mister Chair, Mister Chair.
Yes.
Thirty days from today.
Thirty days from today?
Yes, Madam Chair.
And what happens if you don't collect within thirty days? You will have to pay and then you can take your time and collect from the people who are renting. The government wants this money and we need it. We'll take it either from you or from those people, thirty days. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mister Chair.
Uh, I even want to ask if it were a private sector you are renting from, would you be doing this too?
That would be difficult, Mister Chair.
Why difficult? Because it's a government property, so it's, 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 it's the same, it's because it's government, it's not private sector, so everything should go that way.
Mister Chair, we have taken care of this work and we are going to apply ourselves seriously to all the discussions that is going on here to, um, foster future occurrences. Thank you.
Yes, madam.
Um, Honorable Chair, I'd like to know, is there a reason why these rents are not being deducted as source?
Uh, Honorable Madam Chair, um, these were situations I inherited and as it becomes, they have become audit issues now, we are finding, um, proper way of addressing them so that, um, to ensure that the right things are done, Madam, Mister Chair.
So your right way is wrong.
Yes, Madame Naakoye.
Um, I would like to know whether you have applied any, um, necessary sanctions to the officers whose negligence resulted to these infractions?
Madam Chair, after the audit, um, findings, we've given them time, so any sanction will come after they fail to comply with the existing argument that we put in place. But with this thirty days issue, we are going to be more aggressive to recover this, to, um, avoid any, any, um, embarrassing situation that will affect all, all of us.
Yeah, I'm sure about that because within thirty days, he's going to pay five thousand. So he will find a way of collecting it from them. Yes, clerk, you have it, uh, make, take note of that because within thirty days, we want to make sure that you've paid this amount, otherwise, we are coming after you. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph twenty-one fifteen and Honorable Simon will take care of that, please.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. It's an issue of, um, underpayment of rent. Again, rent is running through, uh, five staff, um, underpaying rent, total of seven thousand six hundred and seventy-four. Again, the question is, why has it been allowed to go on for such a long time and what measures have been put in place to collect the money?
Ma- Madam Chair, um, as I did indicate, these were issues that happened before I took over and as I, um, they have become issues of concern, we have put structures in place to collect all this and they have even started even paying up to now. Uh, if we, if we were to focus on only, um, these outstanding things, I could have assured you that it could have finished by now, but when the issue came, we decided that after the, um, from the time that they defaulted, they should pay all the outstanding money, um, rent up to now. So they started, but because of this is, audit issue, we just subtracted the, the, the one that affected this audit, the, the audit reporting period. And so I want to assure the House that, um, with this thirty days hanging around my neck, um, it will, it will, it will, it will be difficult for me to go and relax. So I just want to assure the House that, because whatever we are doing here will be of benefit of all of us and so we are taking this, um, exercise very seriously. And from here, because they are watching me and I believe, um, when you are dealing with internal things, sometimes people feel that you, they are personal issues, but as it has become a national issue now and they are watching me for the wrong reasons, I believe all of them will support us to salvage this situation so that next time we come with, um, clean hands when we come, um, we won't even come here again, we won't come here again.
Uh, you keep on saying when you took over, when did you take over? Sir, when did you take over?
I took over ten years ago.
Hello? Chairman? Chairman? Gentlemen, gentlemen, you know, you are under oath, you know, do you know that you are under oath?
Yes, Mister Chairman.
So are you taking this committee for granted or what?
Not at all.
Are you taking us for granted?
Not at all.
Then, why will he be in office for ten good years? We are talking about report and you see, the report for twenty twenty-four, we are talking about when you took over, when you took over. Gentlemen, be serious, you are under oath and then we, you know, these committees have powers of ha- high court, so you are under oath, it's an obligation on you to speak the truth.
Chair, Chair, Chair with, with, with a sincere apology, I, I don't think that we will, I mean, this is a very, very serious national exercise, the officer attaches very serious, um, exercise, I mean, in attention to this, importance of this. Um, Parliament, we know the powers that are conferred on Parliament in terms of the oversight to ensure that the public purse is protected, we should, in fact, it's the democratic face of the country and we know what it is that the powers that they have. I mean, the officer did not say that out of any malice, um, we, sometimes we, we, I, I was a bit surprised, but, but maybe he had inherited a system, um, and sometimes not until something become an audit issue, you may not have averted yourself to some of these maybe lapses that have occurred. And so what we are saying is that the, that is why the audit is important. I recently I said that public money should be distributed in public so that people can, you know, identify what the loopholes are and I think that that is the real essence of this exercise, we take care, but we apologize that if, if, if we came across as somebody who is not taking the committees, I mean, with us, we, we, we apologize for that, please. Thank you.
Right, um, so, um, so, sir, I, I want you to commit to this committee, uh, we're on recess, when Parliament resumes, we will submitting a report to the plenary. You have thirty days to recover all these monies. Aside reporting to the auditors, we want a written commitment from you, one, that in thirty days, you are going to recover the money. After the thirty days, we want to see a report, attach all payment vouchers to it and bring it to this committee. Can we get that commitment? I want you to say it live on, on, on TV.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Uh, Honorable Bauer, please.
Thank you, Chair. I, um, when he was saying he just took, when he took over, when he took over, I want to, 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 to find, does he still stand by that way that he just took over? Ten years ago? Does he still stand by that assertion? Or he withdraws?
Madam Chair, I, I've revised my, my expression, my grammar. My position, I have withdrawn.
Okay, honorable members, we have a tall order to go this afternoon. So the next infraction is on twenty-one nineteen and Honorable Edemagbana will take that one.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, the next infraction also relates to unpaid rent of seventy-seven thousand three hundred and fifty Ghana cities. But before I get to it, in the explanation of the head of civil service, he, in defending or trying to put up what I would call an excuse for the principal, he said maybe these things are systemic things that he may have inherited, but Mister Chair, I take a strong exception to that because as a principal or as the principal of the institution, the Public Financial Management Acts and the regulation is supposed to be like your Bible, something you religiously read and understand, all that should guide all actions that you take within the institution. And when you look at Regulation forty-six of the Public Financial Management Regulations, it is clearly stated that within twenty-four hours, all non-tax revenue collected must be lodged into the account. And these things are even supposed to be deducted as source and across all the institutions, there is blatant disregard for this particular act. So I want to ask him if this is the first time he's coming into contact with the Public Financial Management Acts and the regulations and why he disregarded or he allowed his officers to disregard this particular provision throughout his, his tenure of administration?
Madam Chair, um, this was not intentional. The affected officers actually started paying the money, but it couldn't, it, it wasn't up to the ten percent and we.
Mister Chair, my, my question is not about whether they have started paying, it's about whether he, as the principal, is aware of the regulations that guides the collection of this rent.
Madam Chair, I'm, I'm aware.
So you are aware? Is that an admission that you have been negligent all these years? Because you know the law, but you were not, yes, complying with the law, is that an admission of negligence?
Mister, Madam Chair, this was oversight.
Let me, let me come here, please.
Okay, so with this seventy-seven thousand three hundred and fifty Ghana cities, the last time I checked, it can provide at least two boreholes. When are we getting this money? When are we going to recover the money?
Uh, within the thirty, the thirty days that Madam Chair has ruled.
See, sir, what is this happening? It's twenty twenty-one, out of this seventy-seven thousand, twenty twenty-one, the amount due was twenty-four thousand, they paid eight thousand six hundred. Twenty twenty-two, amount owed was twenty-four thousand, they paid ten thousand. Twenty twenty-three, another twenty-four thousand, they paid zero. Twenty twenty-four, amount is twenty-four thousand, they paid zero and I know that you just took over ten years ago, this was all during your time. So thirty days, this will be collected.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, I think the seventy-seven thousand is not. Sorry, I think that one is, 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 is not from G N S. The amount is Institute of Technical Supervision.
Institute of what?
Technical Supervision. My name is Michael Kufinyakum, the acting principal.
And that is you?
Yes, please.
And you should have collected this amount?
Yes, please.
Oh, and the other guy was sitting down, taking your blame and you are sitting here smiling. Sir?
No, it's this one.
Why haven't you collected this amount?
Thank you very much, Madam Chair, actually.
Madam Chair?
Sorry, Mister Chair.
Is that what you referred to me?
Sorry, Mister Chair.
The last time I checked, I was a guy.
Yes, sir, thank you very much. Thank you, Honorable.
Yes, sir, I'm.
Yes, sir, um. This is a rent, a facility rented by the, wedged by municipal assembly. They are renting our facility and since I took over in twenty twenty-three, yeah, twenty twenty-three, these monies have been outstanding and I have been writing officially to the assembly and following up, but we are very close, but we are just, I just sent the assembly, so I've been working in there regularly to, to collect this money, but they have been, they have refused over the past time to, to, to pay the money. So the new municipal executive who just took over, I went to him, I think second I wrote to him and I followed up in person to inquire about the payment and he said he had just taken over, so I should give him some time to understand the issue and then see how best he can make payments. So yesterday, he issued a letter to me that is engaging management, they are going to take steps to make payments, so he has assured me that I should last, the monies will be paid.
Did you say yesterday?
Yeah, yesterday.
You can't be serious.
But I've been going there every time, but only yesterday, they gave me a written consent commitment, I showed them, the thing has escalated to pack and we need evidence of their commitment.
Because they knew you were coming to Public Accounts Committee.
Yes.
That's why they gave you this.
The auditorium, they saw the report.
Sir?
They saw the report.
That is a story that we have heard.
Yes.
We want the money.
Yes.
When are we going to get the money?
So I plead that maybe we can give you some time, maybe after the end of this year to collect all the money.
Some time is not definite.
End of the year.
Hi.
Yes, please. This is a different, they are local government, the assembly and, and we have. They have a problem and process are trying to understand the rent agreement and everything, so the M C has requested for some time to.
Sir, I think in your case, sixty days would be more than enough because the assemblies just got common fund.
Yes.
They have common funds, you know, they're all of us sitting here, we are members of Parliament.
Yes.
When they get common fund, we know and they have common fund. When they get common fund, we know, and they have common fund.
All right, sir.
Sixty days is enough for you.
All right, sir.
If not, you'll be using your salary to pay for this. So then you can wait the next ten years, you collect the money.
All right, sir, thank you very much.
So sixty days for you.
Not a day.
Auditors take note and clerk take note of that one also. Okay, you are discharged.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Uh, we'll call, um, Agenda Ministry, please.
Thank you very much for the opportunity. We are grateful.
Respectfully, Office of Head of Civil Service, I'm told there's one last question, so, uh, please.
We have been recalled. There's one last question. You, you keep it there. Keep it here. Uh, Honorable, go ahead and answer a question, please.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. I'm grateful because this infraction relates to uh, a very basic procedure associated with consultancy services that your department took to undertake. And it is grounded on Regulation forty-six of the Public Financial Management Regulation, twenty-nineteen, L I twenty-three seventy-eight, which requires the Principal Spending Officer to ensure the efficient collection of non-tax revenue. Indeed, the auditors indicated that, and I quote, "We noted that the department had undertaken consultancy services for some ministries, departments totaling eighty-one thousand five hundred Ghana cedis, for which they had defaulted in making payments." And Honorable Chair, with your leave, I walk through the details. Management review for Ministry of Works and Housing, Ministry of Finance...
Honorable, is it under Works and Housing?
No, it's, it's under Management Services that these, this entity provided. It's part of the question, it's part of the, uh, audit, the paragraph twenty-one twenty-eight, it's stated clearly there. Office of Head of Civil Service, they also did establishment level consultancy job for Ghana Gaming Commission, Ministry of Fisheries and Aquaculture Development, Ministry of Health, Ministry of Education, operational organizational manual for the Ministry of Fisheries, Ministry of Health, Ministry of Education, Ministry of Tourism, Arts and Culture, Ministry of Lands and Natural Resources, Office of Head of Civil Service, Government Secretarial, Ministry of Chief Tency, Department of Labor, Coastal Development Authority, Ministry of Health, Department of Cooperatives, Ministry of Works and Housing, Ministry of Education, Ministry of Finance, Government Secretarial School, Ministry of Chief Tency, Ministry of, Information Services Department, the National House of Chiefs, Ministry of Sanitation and Water Resources, and Government Secretarial also benefited from operational manual development for these entities. These entities benefited from your services and to the total amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred Ghana cedis. And there was default in collection of the fees. Now, this is what the auditors recommended. And I quote, "We recommend that the director should ensure that the accountant recovers the total amount of eighty-one thousand five hundred Ghana cedis from the defaulters and same be paid into the Auditor General's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana, failing which the director should pay." Now, this is a response from the O D T. Management acknowledged the recommendation and indicated that efforts were being made to collect the outstanding fees from the M D As. My question. Honorable Chair, what is the status of collection? Have we collected amounts? And if not, why?
Um, Honorable Chair, um, I'm the Executive Secretary, Management Services Department. My name is Jonathan Tetelati. Recovery efforts and collection have already started. We've actually sent demand letters to all the institutions that have defaulted. And we've so far collected from eleven institutions. That's seventeen, about seventeen point nine percent of the total amount. But I think we should be more aggressive in the collection. And I have scheduled myself to actually do this collection. I'm actually debt collector number one and I'm ensuring that it's done. We actually have assurances from most of the chief directors in payments. So it's ongoing, the recovery effort is ongoing.
Chair, Chair, before you come in, I, just, just to, just to ride on what you just said. I was wondering how, for instance, a department under me and I task the department, in fact, the M S D is a consultant of the civil service in terms of development of, uh, you know, our manuals, a scheme of service. In fact, indeed, in the, in the, in the realignment that we just did, reconfiguration of the ministries in terms of their mandate, in terms of their vision, et cetera, they led the pack, you know, to, to be able to re... And then, of course, the postings of, you know, almost four hundred staff that had lost out as a result of the realignment we had. So it is a, it is an institution under me that I can task to help me to function. And so when I saw my name there as the Office of, I said, what I, why do I have to pay for? For instance, Parliament asking the, the Public Account Committee to do a work and Parliament has to pay the committee to do the work. So for, for others, yes, you can collect them. But if you are charging O A C S, I want to tell you that I won't pay. And then, of course, if I, then G S S will not, that is an institution that is an, is an, is a department I, I task to do some work for me to strengthen my outfit, I hope you understand. So, so that is, but for the other institutions, yes, we need to strengthen the collection effort. But if you are going to take money from your father, I'm telling you that I will not pay. But we will, we will help you to collect from the other chief directors so that we can strengthen your outfit to deliver. That, that's, but, so I want the Chair to appreciate that this is my tool that is used in the management of the service as an institution. And I can task them from time to time to undertake some exercises. And I was wondering why I'll have to pay them if I sanction them to do work for which reason they have been established. Chair, humbly, I humbly submit. Thank you.
So how much of this amount have you collected?
My...
Use your microphone so that the whole country will hear your response.
So far, we've collected from five institutions and it's ongoing.
That wasn't my question.
Fourteen thousand five hundred so far.
Out of the eighty-one thousand?
Yes.
So if you take your father out of it, O A C S, uh, when are you going to complete the collection of these amounts?
Honorable Chair, if I can be giving about sixty days.
Sixty days?
Yes.
Granted.
Thank you.
Sixty days, and you bring us a report. Sixty days, that's, you have collected everything? Because if not, your salary will be paying for it.
Honorable Chair, I'll do my best.
No, this is not about doing your best. How long have you been there, sir?
Half, one and a half years.
You've been there one and a half years? You took over only one and a half years. Somebody took over ten years and they said... Honorable member, are we okay?
Honorable Chair, with all due respect, I think that the amount involved, uh, it's relatively, uh, low. And considering that, I mean, in Parliament, with the knowledge of what the resources that have been made available to all these M D As that we are aware of, payment of these amounts that we see here, five thousand, three thousand and the rest of it, I think that within sixty, uh, within thirty days, that should be enough for you to, uh, make efforts to collect. Also, the, their father, the indication that their father will not pay, in fact, they occupy of the twenty-six names that we have, their father is only, uh, occupying two places. So it's a very small and negligible amount of the, uh, what will be taken out. The rest, the rest, I think that, uh, it has to be collected. Thank you.
Honorable member, do you want to overrule the Chairman from sixty days to thirty days?
No, Chairman.
All right, thank you very much. You are now discharged. Let's call the Ministry of, uh...
Thank you very much, we are grateful, um, for the opportunity. Thank you.
Uh, clerk, have they been sworn in? Could they be sworn in, please?
Aye. Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee
That the evidence I shall give before this committee
Touching the matter in issue
Touching the matter in issue
Shall be the truth
Shall be the truth
The whole truth
The whole truth
And nothing but the truth
And nothing but the truth
So help me God
So help me God
Honorable Minister, could you introduce yourself and your, your team, please?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. My name is Agnes Namomulati, Member of Parliament for the Cruo Constituency and the Minister for Gender, Children and Social Protection. And I have with me my staff, they will do self-introduction, please.
Thank you, Honorable. Affixed as a career, the Chief Director of the Ministry of Gender, Children and Social Protection.
Vaidoswa Mensa, Director, Human Resource Directorate of the Ministry.
Vincenti Abwesyama, Chief Accountant of the Ministry.
Alina Parise, Director of Finance of the Ministry.
Thank you very much. Your infraction is on paragraph twenty-fourty-nine. And, uh, Honorable, uh, Enim will, will take you, please.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Mister Chair, this infraction has to do with unserved born period. And the amount involved is fifty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-five Ghana cedis. So the auditors noted that one, uh, Kennedy Osay, an Assistant Director of the Ministry, was granted a two-year steady leave with pay to pursue a PhD at the Queensland University in Australia from thirtieth January twenty-seventeen to February twenty-nineteen. The auditors also noted that the same Dr. Kennedy Osay was also, uh, declined a nine-month leave of absence after they had extended his steady leave period to enable him to complete his program. This was a three-year extension. The auditors also observed that Kennedy Osay benefited from Get Fund Scholarship to the tune of one hundred and twenty-five thousand Australian dollars and also, uh, had allowances of forty-nine thousand four hundred US dollars as allowances alone. Then Dr. Osay upon return to post on thirteenth September twenty-twenty-two, only served for eight months, after which he took thirty-six days annual leave and later resigned from the civil service effective fifteenth of August twenty-twenty-three. Madam Minister, uh, the recommendation was for the Chief Director to recover the amount of fifty-four thousand six hundred and sixty-four point nine one Ghana cedis. What has been done so far on this?
Thank you, Honorable Chair. With your kind permission, indulge my, um, Chief Director to respond to.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Please, the Director, H R will respond to the question. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Honorable Chair, so, um, Dr. Kennedy Osay is a former staff of the Ministry of Gender, Children and Social Protection. And in two thousand and seventeen, he obtained steady leave with pay from the Office of the Head of Civil Service, which is our employer and also the central management agency responsible for the human resources management of the entire civil service. This steady leave with pay facility was for a period of two years. In twenty-nineteen, when his time was up for him to return, he asked for extension. But the Office of the Head of Civil Service declined this leave and gave him steady leave with, without pay for him to complete the program. He again asked for an additional extension. In fact, if you look at the number of times he requested, he was given about three years' extension without pay. And he reported to post in twenty-twenty-two. When he reported, we duly informed the Office of the Head of Civil Service that he has returned from the steady leave facility that was granted him. Now, he resigned in twenty-twenty-three, in Sep, in August twenty-twenty-three. And the Office reported this resignation to the Office of the Head of Civil Service for their approval. And then the Ministry took the steps to discontinue immediately his salary. And then the ministry took the steps to discontinue immediately his salary in August twenty-twenty-three. Thank you very much. This is the update.
Uh, Madam Director, H R.
Yes, sir.
The question I asked was simple. How much of this has been recovered to date? Not the history about the leave and all that, yes?
Okay, thank you very much. So when we reported the matter to the Office of the Head of Civil Service, they engaged him and then gave him the terms and then how much should be recovered and then paid to government. So far, he has paid three thousand cedis out of the total amount that, out of nineteen thousand, um, what was the amount? Nineteen thousand and something?
Madam Director, H R.
Yes, sir.
I know of this nineteen thousand issue, but then the auditors after reconciliation also found out that there was no record to, uh, ascertain that thirty-four thousand that you had claimed was, uh, was in question. So the total amount to be refunded by Dr. Kennedy Osay is supposed to be fifty-four thousand, not the nineteen thousand you are referring to.
So.
Then again, my next question will be to the auditors. Auditors, can you confirm whether three thousand Ghana cedis has been received? And also confirm to us the fifty-four thousand after your reconciliation with Dr. Kennedy Osay?
Honorable Chair, we, we, uh, don't have any evidence to the fact that, uh, three thousand has been recovered. That has not been made available to us. And secondly, if you look at the report, per reconciliation and the payroll records available, the fifty-four thousand still stands. And so we disagree on the fact that the person is supposed to pay nineteen thousand instead of the fifty-four thousand. Per the payroll records, the individual involved received salary for the period they are indicating that the salary was not paid to the person. As far as we are concerned, we are supposed to recover the entire amount of fifty-four thousand from the individual involved.
Madam.
The payment of three thousand has not been, uh, given to us. We don't have any evidence to that effect.
Madam, uh, Director H R, so two questions. Uh, what's the evidence that we have received three thousand? Then the next, uh, question will be, what was the basis for the agreement for Dr. Kennedy Osay to pay only nineteen thousand, when indeed he's supposed to refund fifty-four thousand?
Okay, thank you very much. So as I indicated earlier on, his resignation was forwarded to the Office of the Head of Civil Service for their information and their approval. So they engaged Dr. Kennedy Osay and not the ministry because they had granted the leave to Dr. Kennedy Osay.
Uh, Madam Director H R, over here is the management response I'm referring to. And the management response came from the ministry, not civil service. So what was the basis for the ministry to now say that it is nineteen thousand and not fifty-four thousand? Because this response came from management, not from the civil service. So what evidence is available to you to say that it is only nineteen and not fifty-four?
General, not something that you have put on paper to come and tell us. So can you kindly respond to the auditor general's report and not something that you know? But we have called you here because there's a report citing an infraction against the Gender Ministry. So respectfully, can you speak to the report?
Madam Director H R, since, uh, you have indicated you received this evidence from the Head of Civil Service, has this evidence been provided to the audit service? Since you received that from the civil service, has that been given to the auditors for verification?
Yes, please. We submitted copies of the receipts as received from Office of the Head of Civil Service to the auditors.
Okay, auditors, do you have anything to say on this?
Honorable Chair, as I indicated earlier, we don't have any evidence to that.
Okay. Uh, Madam Director H R, uh, do we know the whereabouts of Dr. Kennedy Osay? Is he still in the country or he's gone away?
Please, the ministry has no idea where he is. When he tendered in his resignation, we have no idea whether he's still in the country or not.
Has there been any official reports or complaints on Dr. Kennedy Osay to any of our security agencies?
In fact, Office of the Head of Civil Service, you know, when we submitted the resignation to them, they engaged him. So as we speak, the matter is, or the issue is between the Office of the Head of Civil Service and Dr. Kennedy Osay. So we cannot tell whether they have reported him to any of the security agencies.
Madam, uh, Director H R, the recommendation from the auditors was not for civil service to recover the money. It was for the Chief Director to recover, take steps to recover. Since we have the Chief Director here, I think that it is right that she respond to this because this recommendation was to her to recover the amount and not the civil service.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Uh, Honorable Chair, we wrote to, uh, Office of the Head of Civil Service to demand follow-up because.
Madam, uh, raise up the mic, uh-huh, so that we can, the country can hear you.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, the Head of Civil Service, they are the employers of.
Chief Director, we know this. There's a specific question. Can you please go straight to it?
Okay.
If you can't, you can ask for permission to go and come back properly after confer with your minister and whoever you need to confer with to give us the right update. Respectfully, let's not dance around this. The Director H R has made it a point that it's Head of Civil Service, so she's washed her hands of it.
Yeah.
Now, the report says the Chief Director should do the needful. If you also cannot, please, you have a new minister. Speak to the minister and see how best you can solve this. And, and let's not dally, uh, uh, dance and dally around this thing because we also have another agency, I mean, to, to, to take, take care of, respectfully.
Thank you, Honorable Chair. We wrote to the Head of Civil Service. I have a copy of the letter here, uh, telling them of the pending fifty-four thousand that Kennedy is supposed to refund. The Head of Service liaised with, uh, Get Fund because the Get Fund awarded him the scholarship. They did their calculations and then came out with nineteen thousand. That, that is the amount Kennedy is supposed to pay. We also wrote a letter to the Head of Civil Service as a follow-up so that they will report whether Kennedy has paid because their salaries are between them, not to us.
Chief Director, respectfully, you had the auditors come to your end.
Yes.
The auditors, I'm sure, gave you a basis for the fifty-four. Did you or did you not ask the auditors for the basis of the fifty-four thousand?
No, they did their calculation and gave us. So we presented that to.
And you did not ask for the basis of their calculation?
Yeah, they used the amount, uh, Kennedy was away.
A whole ministry, the audit service gives you a figure as to a particular issue, and you just pick it and send to Get Fund without asking them for clarification as to why they arrived at. Certainly, there is a reason why they arrived at the fifty-four thousand. We would want to find out the, the reason why they arrived at the fifty-four thousand.
Yes, we did. They used the amount, uh, Dr. Kennedy received plus the salaries he received. So they summed up everything to that amount. So when they presented that amount to us, we wrote to Office of the Head of Civil Service to inform them. On our part, we stopped his salary. Immediately, we heard that he had resigned. We stopped the salary. And then we wrote to Office of the Head of Civil Service to notify them. And then we also followed up so that they could retrieve their monies. And they held a meeting with Get Fund. The Get Fund awarded the con-, uh, the scholarship to Dr. Kennedy. So they sat with the Get Fund and then they arrived at the nineteen thousand because he came back.
So what was the basis for the nineteen thousand from Get Fund, please?
Okay, that, we will not have that information because it was between his employer.
So then on what basis are you saying that they should pay the nineteen thousand? If you yourself don't know why Get Fund arrived at nineteen thousand, this is money. And so if someone gives you a figure to pass on to somebody, you should find out how they arrived at the nineteen thousand. But if you tell us that you don't know and that it's Get Fund that gave you the nineteen thousand, so you have passed it on. Respectfully, I don't think this is the way to go about things.
Honorable.
The auditor general has stated fifty-four thousand. They gave a basis for the fifty-four thousand. Get Fund has stated nineteen thousand. Tell us a basis for Get Fund arriving at the nineteen thousand. You are not able to tell us, but you are able to pass it on to Head of Civil Service, to pass it on to Dr. Kennedy Osay, to pay that amount. Respectfully, we cannot override what the auditors have said.
We have it here.
Thank you.
We have every detail here.
So share with us.
O A C S, uh, wrote back to us. This was first October twenty-twenty-four, so the report is here.
So share with us how they arrived at the nineteen thousand. You have shared with us how they arrived at the fifty-four thousand. Share with us the nineteen thousand.
Let me read. Doctor, can I read, please? Mm-hmm. They said there, at the initial instance, the Office of the Head of Civil Service, in a letter number A C, dated twelfth October twenty-twenty-three, requested Dr. Kennedy Osay to redeem a bond of fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight cedis, seven pesos. This amount included nine months of salary of thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-nine cedis, fifty-six pesos, which was inadvertently included in the total figure. Consequently, the sum of thirty-four thousand four hundred and fifty-nine cedis, fifty-six pesos, was deducted from fifty-three thousand seven hundred and fifty-eight cedis, seven pesos, resulting in an outstanding amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five cedis, fifty-one pesos. In view of this, the Office of the Head of Civil Service, in a letter number A C hundred slash four four eight slash one zero one E, dated second November twenty-twenty-three, requested Dr. Kennedy Osay to refund an amount of nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five cedis, fifty-one pesos, to redeem his bond. All his guarantees were copied. This office subsequently accepted a schedule of payment by Dr. Osay Kennedy, which was a thousand cedis a month into the consolidated fund accounts at the Controller and Accountant General's Department. It should be noted that Dr. Kennedy Osay has so far paid only three thousand Ghana cedis out of the nineteen thousand three hundred and twenty-five cedis, fifty pesos. Copies of receipts attached. Trust this explanation meets your expectations. Signed by Madame Elizabeth Obin, Director, R T D D, Head of the Civil Service.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chief Director. All that was read to us, the auditors reviewed and confirmed. From the audit position, all these amounts we are talking about were actually paid to him during the period. So the justification from the Head of Civil Service and Get Fund's reconciliation does not even come in here. So what as a ministry you are expected to do is to call Mr. Kennedy Osay back and explain this is the audit position and that the total amount owed is fifty-four thousand and not nineteen thousand. These are monies he received, and he, he has not denied from any of the facts we have available that he did not receive those monies. So, Madam Chief Director, the other issue we have now is that the three thousand Ghana cedis that has been received so far, there is no evidence available to the auditors. So how was this monies received and what's the evidence available now for the auditors to also confirm?
Honorable, uh, the Office of the Head of Civil Service, they provided the account. We are not previewed to the, uh, accounts and its content. So payment was done directly into the account. They wrote to us indicating the amount.
Chief Director, respectfully, we're coming here. What stopped you from going for evidence? You were coming here and you know you have been cited for such an infraction. So nothing stopped you from going for the evidence from Office of the Head of Civil Service that, uh, um, to come, at least show to the auditors for the auditors to clear, or that should be the job of the Public Accounts Committee?
Honorable, Honorable Chair, we wrote to them, but unfortunately, we haven't received updates from them.
We always hide from this man, and we wrote to them. That letter is not enough. Your office and the minis-, Office of Head of Civil Service, how, how many kilometers? There are times that you just need to go the extra mile to settle things that need to be settled, to clear it once and for all in the auditor general's report. It is not okay for us to say we have written to them, then we wave a letter. That is not enough. We all need to go the extra mile to make sure we do things properly. So Chief Director, this is not enough. You knew you were coming here. At least, they also were here, um, this afternoon. If for nothing at all, you should have conferred with them that we are all coming here. Can you give me evidence to show that clearly they have paid three thousand? But you come, you say they have paid three thousand, the auditors say they haven't received or they haven't seen evidence to that effect, and you just wave a letter that we wrote to them. That is not enough, respectfully.
Honorable Chair, uh, respectfully, we wrote to them, we followed up, we were with them. Even here, we persuaded them to sit so that at least we could respond to the queries together, but, uh, unfortunately, they didn't yield any positive results.
Uh, Madam, Madam Chief Director, how long was he supposed to serve? What was the length of the bond? Uh, speak through the microphone, please.
Four years, please.
And how much of time did he serve?
He served eight months, eight months.
Speak in the microphone, please.
He served eight months.
Eight months?
Yes.
Out of the four years?
Yes.
And after, uh, uh, so it means, and then they say we only owe him, uh, he only owes three thousand?
Nineteen thousand.
Uh, nineteen thousand?
Nineteen thousand.
Oh, Dr. Kennedy Osay, the country sent you to Australia. You got your PhD. Thank you very much. But look at your negligence. It has brought the ministry, the chief, the minister, the ministry over here because of your negligence. Hey, so tomorrow, should we sponsor somebody else to go and get a PhD? Dr. Kennedy Osay, come and pay and then make sure that, you know, you redeem these people. Come and redeem yourself, Dr. Kennedy Osay. I know you are watching us. Dr. Kennedy Osay, come and pay this amount. Madam, when he signed the bond, I'm sure he had guarantees. People guaranteed for him, didn't he?
Yes, please.
And have you called any of the guarantees?
The O A C S followed up and that they were not responding, so they.
They were not responding?
Yes, please.
Me, the way I do my stuff is that when you owe me, I call the police. You call the police. They will go after him. This is fraud. This is fraud. You are supposed to serve four years, you serve eight months and then you go away. Dr. Kennedy Osay, you are watching us. Come and pay. Otherwise, we will take the next step. Uh, the next infraction is on paragraph twenty-four, uh, twenty-fourty-nine, and it's unaccounted revenue of fourteen thousand two hundred and ten. Um, we recommend that the director should recover the total amount with interest. Has this amount been collected?
Honorable Chair, we have just one question.
This was on Department of Social Welfare, secondly.
They are not under our ministry. They are under, uh, local government service.
They are under local government service. Clerk, uh, the one, take note over there. Social welfare is under local government service. Madam, speak through the microphone.
Honorable Chair, the regional level and district level, they are under the local government service.
The regional and the district level?
Headquarters.
Okay.
You have the headquarters here, but are the region and, and the district level, they are under the local government?
Local government service, but we also have institutions, rehab centers and then the children's homes.
Under gender?
Under, yes, under the headquarters, Gender Ministry.
Please come again. I'm a bit, yeah, because.
The, the ministry. The the ministry.
Is the same social welfare?
Social welfare under the Ministry of Gender Children and Social Protection is decentralized. So we have the headquarters here under the ministry. And then at the regional level, regional social welfare, they fall under the local government service.
So where do they derive their salaries from, local government or gender ministry?
Everything is under the local government.
Thank you. Minister, it's unfortunate that you have to go through this, but um that is the nature of the job.
Honorable Chair, I, when this thing came to my attention, we made several efforts, especially with the Dr. Kennedy or say's um case. Even here, I tried to draw the attention of the Head of Service to stay because they said they had written to the Attorney General. We don't have evidence to that effect. And if you look at it, even though the Chief Director is to demand and make sure that the payment is done, much of the responsibility is at their end. Aside the letters that were written to them, we've been to their office to ensure that we get some concrete evidence before appearing before uh before this against committee. Unfortunately, that wasn't done, but I turned an only check and realized that they had left. And so we take the responsibility, we work with them to see uh what we can do about this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Madam, you are discharged. Now we call Ministry of Foreign Affairs. Uh, Clark, can we swear in the minister and uh his people?
Hi.
Hi.
Swear by the Almighty God.
Swear by the Almighty God.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
That the evidence I shall give before this committee.
Touching the matter in issue.
Touching the matter in issue.
Shall be the truth.
Shall be the truth.
The whole truth.
The whole truth.
And nothing but the truth.
And nothing but the truth.
So help me God.
So help me God.
Honorable Minister, could you introduce yourself and then your um delegation also introduce themselves?
Thank you, Chair. I'm here in the uh capacity as the Deputy Foreign Affairs Minister, Honorable James Judge Quason. And with me is my team here for the, from the Foreign Affairs and Regional Integration Bureau. Thank you.
Where is your minister?
Ambassador Ramses Joseph Cleland, Chief Director of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs.
Uh, Chief Director, who is the Chief Director?
I'm sorry, please.
Director, where is your minister?
Minister is on an official trip accompanying the President to Japan, please.
All right.
Thank you.
My name is Ambassador Kadijai Drisu, Acting Coordinating Director.
My name is Solomon Aqua, Director of Internal Audits.
My name is Babu Chee, Director of Finance.
I am Divina Ajwase Nju, Director, Human Resource and Administration. Thank you.
Okay, your infraction starts from paragraph sixteen eighty-three. An honorable Bawa will hand it there for him.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And um Ministry of Foreign Affairs. The said paragraph relates to an earned salary. The authors in the review of your books realize that three foreign service officers continued to appear on the electronic salary payment voucher of the ministry between October twenty twenty and July twenty twenty-three. As a result of that, um, an amount of sixty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dot nine one Ghana CDs was paid to their respective bank accounts, even though they were receiving their salaries at the mission. And so the auditors recommended that the Chief Director should recover the said sixty-nine thousand five hundred and eighty-five dot nine one Ghana CDs with interest at the prevailing back uh Bank of Ghana rate from the three officers and pay them into the Auditor General's recovery account. Have you done that? Have you collected this money?
Mr. Chair, thank you very much. Uh, if I may, Mr. Edison Agbenyega and Stella Anna Kuafo, who are staff of the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, have fully refunded the amount standing in their names. Evidence of this has been submitted to the Auditor General's representatives, please. Uh, there is one other person, uh, who is uh Ms. Vida Mensa Kuache. She is uh uh working under the Research Department. And um the, I spoke with the Director General of the Research Department, who indicated that the records available to him do not show double salary. However, he is prepared to show evidence of that, but uh it, the evidence was not made available to me. Thank you.
Chief Director, do you have, once he knew you were appearing before the committee, are these the evidence that he says he has? That shows that uh Madame Vida Mensa has not, I mean, was entitled to the money, should have been brought here so that at least we can clear the issues. Now, the remaining two, the recommendation was that they should pay with the prevailing Bank of Ghana interest rate. Did you collect the interest on this?
Uh, yes, please, I, the ev- the evidence has been made available to the representatives of the audits, uh, Audit Auditor General. And as for the um officer from the Research Department, the best I could do was to forward a copy of the reports. So uh the um uh have been given the reports and they have indicated that they would, they would respond. But um I, that that's the best I could do, uh, uh, Mr. Chair.
Auditors, can you confirm that uh two of the staff have paid their monies? That is um Edison and then Stella, you paid their monies with the interest as recommended. Honorable Chair, with your permission, I would defer to the branch head for Foreign Affairs to respond to the infractions relating to Foreign Affairs. Thank you.
I'm Gloria Uso from an Assistant Auditor General. Yes, I can confirm that the two people that he mentioned have paid their amounts in full. For the third person who happens to be a staff of the Research Department, who was on postings in the mission, she's paid seven thousand six hundred and eighty-nine out of her total indebtedness. She's left with four thousand four hundred and seven to pay. So I'm surprised they are saying that she she is not supposed to pay that amount. She's not supposed to refund the salaries that was paid to her.
It means that the the auditors are more abreast than the Chief Director.
Uh, please, they, they are not our officers, they are not under my ministry. They are from the Research Department. So they make their, they provide their documentation to the auditors and I can only get commitments from them. I can't do more than that. Thank you.
Chairman. Yes, sir. Bawa, please. Chief Director, please, do you know you are under oath?
Yes, yes, please.
So you knew that this research department is not under you? Why are you owning up and claiming as if they are under you?
Respectfully, Mr. Chair, I have not, as to the best of my knowledge, owned up. I only, I'm only responding as far as I can to the uh reports. I have uh sent the reports, uh, which pertains to the Research Department, to the Research Department. And uh the Head of the Research Department indicated to me that he will respond. So uh coming here, I could only account for the officers who are working in the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, not in the Research Department.
You make mention that they did not, uh, the 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 lady in question did not take any money. It's not double salary. You mentioned it, I'm not the one.
No, I'm saying that is what the Research Department's Director told me. But that means that he has to respond to that officially to the uh Public Accounts Committee. But this is what he told me because I I had conversation with him. So I could only, I can only repeat what he said. But he has not written, uh, he has not, to the best of my knowledge, uh, given me evidence of that. But he has, as I'm hearing, made that uh uh, given that evidence to the Auditor General's representatives.
Chief, Chief Director.
Yes, please.
Did he communicate with you orally or in writing?
I spoke with him, knowing that I was coming here. I spoke with him, please.
So it was a verbal thing?
Yes, please. But we forwarded a copy of the Auditor General's uh reports to the Research Department for them to answer.
But when you are meeting a committee of parliament, it's just like meeting the High Court.
I understand that, sir.
You are coming with a hearsay. And then auditors are saying that, no, she owed. You are telling us that she didn't owe.
Respectfully, Chair, I I did not affirm that as a fact. I only said that after speaking with him, this is what he indicated to me.
All right, we'll move on.
Yes, sir.
We'll move on because you have too many infractions. The next infraction is that, yes, uh, at the balance, yes.
Chief Director, once you are liaising with them, you, well, maybe you have to let the Director of the Research Department know that they've paid the amount and there's a balance of four thousand there.
Four thousand four hundred and seven.
The the amount have been recovered, it's left four thousand four hundred and seven Ghana CDs. And then they should take steps to pay it off.
Respectfully, sir, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that's all for me.
Thank you very much. The next fraction is on paragraph sixteen ninety. And honorable, honorable uh Jeffrey Kenny will take that.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Sorry. Let's hold on, please. Let's go to paragraph uh sixteen eighty-six first. And uh, Honorable Shalit Chair would uh would take that.
This infraction is to do with the Ankara Mission. Um, the auditors during their audit noted that between December twenty twenty-one and December twenty twenty-three, an accountable impressed of two hundred and seventy-three nine seven point seven two Turkish lira and ten thousand two hundred and forty-five point eight one euros, which was granted to the Head of Mission and other officers for the official duties on behalf of the mission have not been retired. And the auditor recommended that the Chief Director should make efforts to recover this amount and pay same into the account of the Auditor General Recovery's account. Um, I would like to know what steps you've taken in recovering this amount.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, if I may. The officers have refunded the said amount totaling nineteen thousand one hundred and seven Ghana CDs into the Auditor General's Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana. The evidence has been submitted to the Auditor General's representatives, please. Thank you.
Can you repeat the amount that's been paid? Can you repeat, please?
Uh, the amount paid is nineteen thousand one hundred and seven Ghana CDs.
Out of. You wait.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, forgive me, I'm sorry. I was looking at the wrong document. It's sixteen thousand three hundred and twenty-six euros has been retired by the concerned officers. Evidence has been forwarded to the Auditor General's representatives. I'm sorry, please.
So they've paid in full?
They have paid in full, yes, please.
Can the auditor please confirm this?
Please, I can confirm that it's been paid in full.
You, Honorable Chair.
All right, now let's go to Honorable Jeffrey Kenny. Uh, Kenny, uh, at paragraph sixteen ninety.
This infraction can be found on page three eight one, paragraph uh one six nine zero, one six nine one, and one six nine two. Report from the Audit Auditor General did indicate that three officers, namely, Miss Wasila Husin, Miss Nanaya Ofosuhima Wadi, Mrs. uh Emma, Mrs. Emma Hiniwa Hmensa, who were on mission and salaries from Ghana and from abroad totaling nineteen thousand one hundred and six point nine seven. The Auditor General recommended that the said amount be retrieved by the Chief Director and the validators with interest uh on the Bank of Ghana interest rate. Payable to the Ghana Recovery, uh payable to the Auditor General Recovery account. Failure to do that, the Chief Director and the validators should pay. I want to ask whether they've been able to retrieve such an amount.
Mr. Chair, if I may, the officers have refunded the said amount totaling one nineteen thousand one hundred and seven Ghana CDs into the Auditor General's Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana. The evidence has been submitted to the Auditor General's representatives. Thank you.
Auditors, can you prove any evidence? Can you confirm?
Honorable, please, we can confirm that the amount has been fully refunded.
All right, thank you very much. The next infraction is on paragraph sixteen ninety-three. And uh, Honorable uh Deputy Rankin will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. This issue is regards to an earned salary at the Lume Mission. One of your officers retired from their service and still earning salary, totaling an amount of twenty-three thousand two hundred and eleven Ghana CDs. And the auditors have recommended that the Chief Director should recover the earned salary with interest at the prevailing Bank of Ghana rate from the said officer and deposit it at the recovery account of the Auditor General. What is the status of this?
Mr. Chair, the head of the Research Department indicated that he would come and answer this himself.
Where is he?
I'm not able to answer that, please.
But, sir. So when did he tell you that he would come?
I spoke with him and indicated that the matters which retain to, pertain to Research Department, I will not come and answer those questions.
Clark, take note of that, please. And we'll hold the head of the Research Department with the Chief Director here. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chief Director, I want to ask, the Research Department, is it under you or separately working different?
The Research Department, Mr. Chair, works under the national security. Yes, please.
Chief Director, so who validated the payment for this particular infraction, respectfully?
Madam Chair, it's not the Ministry, I can confirm that, please. I don't have any further information. I'm sorry.
You don't have information on who valid? So tell us, this particular officer, where does he draw his salary from? Is it from the Ministry of Foreign Affairs or from the Research Department?
Thank you, Madam Chair, I have to interject here. This is a security matter, and we would rather not divulge any further information.
Respectfully, Deputy Minister, this is not a security matter. This is an unearned salary, and we are asking that where does the salary, where is the salary drawn from? Is it from national security compensation budget? Or it's from Ministry of Foreign Affairs compensation budget? This has nothing to do with security question. Respectfully, this is something we should know.
To answer you bluntly, in regards to your question, it's drawn from national security, not the Ministry. Thank you.
So that's it? So you are saying it is drawn from national security, so you cannot speak to this? And the auditors, um, auditors, can you throw more light on this? Because I'm a bit, once it's appeared and the Ministry of Foreign Affairs, you need to clarify for us how it was cited and the Ministry of Foreign Affairs.
Honorable Chair, the officer in question was on postings in the Lume Mission. But this particular salary was paid in Ghana. So he was being paid whilst on postings and was being paid here in Ghana. So that's what brought about the unearned salary that we are talking about.
And the payments came from national security or foreign affairs?
Please, with this particular unearned salary, it came from national security.
Okay, madam, you see, auditors, this is where when you are writing your report, those for the Research Department, you put it on the side so that we don't question Foreign Affairs about it. Okay, let's go to the next one. The infraction is on paragraph sixteen ninety-six. And Honorable Duke William Ophreata will take care of that one.
Yes, please. Mr. Chair, this infraction happened in the Malibu Mission, Equatorial Guinea. And it's about unsubstantiated payments. The amount involved was three thousand and eighty-one dollars or F C F A one point nine three zero million. The auditors examined the Internal General Fund payment vouchers and noted that payment voucher number zero six zero zero three six four of twenty-fifth November twenty twenty with a value of F C F A one point nine three zero million was raised in favor of an officer as expenditure incurred during the participation of the peer-to-peer event for diaspora desk in Nairobi, Kenya from eighteenth November twenty nineteen to nineteenth November twenty nineteen. This is surprising. However, the supporting documents on this P V did not have any linkage with the program as narrated on the payment voucher. The auditors recommended that the Chief Director should recover the amount of F C F A one point nine three zero million from the officer and same pay to the Auditor General's Recovery's account with the Bank of Ghana, failing which the Chief Director should pay. So I ask Chief Director, what is the process at the mission of raising a P V? I have three questions. My first question is, what is the process of raising a P V at the mission? Specifically, Malibu Mission.
Well, if an officer has a program, that will be sanctioned by the head of mission, namely the ambassador or in other jurisdictions, it will be the the High Commissioner. And once it's sanctioned, approval is given for the officer to attend the program. Then that will be documented and a request made for finances to attend the program. The finances are released in accordance with the program. And once the officer attends the program, then the impress, if he is providing an impress, will be retired upon his return.
So may I ask, what is the status of the recovery of the funds as recommended by the auditor?
Yes, please. The officer has provided documents in support of the amounts indicated. That's the, the F C F A one point nine three expended during his participation in the program. The evidence of that has been handed to the Auditor General's representatives, please.
Auditors, can you verify this, please?
Honorable, I can confirm that the officer in question has retired the impress or the amount that was given to him and even went further to refund an amount of seventy thousand C F E.
All right, so let's move on. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen zero one, and it's by Nana Osayej.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Chief Director, this is about payment of double salaries to home-based staff, one eighty-five thousand three six eight. Regulation ninety of the Public Financial Management twenty nineteen requires that the employee's salary payment vouchers shall be validated by designated officers of the human resource unit of a covered entity and the head of the management unit within a covered entity. The validation is to ensure that employees who are on posting or transfer out of the office are declared suspended from the payroll. Chief Director, the auditors found out that two home-based staff at posts were validated and paid salaries totaling one eighty-nine thousand nine seven zero point three two. I want to find out from you, my first question. How were they validated and paid?
Due respect, honorable, once again, it's, they are officers from the Research Department, and I prefer to leave that to the Research Department. With due respect, respectfully.
Okay, we will leave it. When they get here. Okay. So now the next infraction will be on paragraph seventeen oh six, and Mr. Frank Eboah will take care of that one.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Chief Director, the infraction is on paragraph seventeen zero six to seventeen zero eight, unaccounted store items. So the external auditors, in the performance of their duty, noted that a member of staff named Madame Esther Jifa Ofori, who was then the head of mission in Malibu, Equatorial Guinea, procured one MacBook laptop and three smartphones, Samsung smartphones, one for herself, one for the minister, and one for the Chancellor, head of Chancy, Chancy. The report further indicated that these items were not recorded in the asset register as required by law or by best practice. Also, the officers failed to hand over the items to the mission after the end of their duty tour. So the auditors recommended that you, the Chief Director, should recover the total amount of five thousand eight hundred US dollars from the officers and same paid into the Auditor General's Recovery's account at the Bank of Ghana, failing which you, the Chief Director, will be liable to pay the total amount of five thousand eight hundred dollars. So the question is, what is the status of the recovery now?
Thank you very much, honorable, and, Mr. Chair. The Ministry has recovered two of the telephones, the phones used by the officers, namely the minister and the head of Chancy. We have not been able to recover the laptop and the phone that was used by the then head of mission, who was a political appointee, ambassador in the Malibu Mission. She has been contacted and she has been written to, to return the items. And so as it is, she is very much aware of the constraints and the obligation upon her to return the items. We have not been able to recover the items yet.
So Chief Director, is it the case that you provide laptops for head of missions? And then they can take them away or what? Is it a practice?
No, that is not a practice. In most cases that I am aware of, they return the items or they leave them in the mission before returning to base. So this is really one of the very, very few instances that I have come across where the head of mission refused to leave the item and returned to the item where they could not be recovered at the mission.
Okay, so auditors, can you confirm the two payments, please?
Honorable, please, I can confirm that the two phones have been retained.
Mr. Chairman, I also noted that the Chief Director did not respond to the auditors' observation when they first sent it to them. And considering the fact that standard audit is very important for all of us, I would advise that going forward, you have to respond to their observations to make things easier for us. Because by your answers that you've been giving to us, most of them have been, we've been able to recover most of them. So I think that if we had responded to them earlier on, I don't think some of these things will find their way in this report. Thank you very much.
I noted, sir, and I apologize for that. Thank you.
Chief Director, the person in question, who has a laptop? When was the last time you got in touch with her?
I have been trying to, over the last couple of weeks, to get in touch with her. She only returned my call yesterday. And it was my telephone. There was no other way I could get in touch with her. And she indicated to me that she was out of the country and that she was not available.
When is she going to return the laptop?
She said when she gets back. But there was no written commitment on that. But I would want, since she was an ambassador, to take her word for it as a gentleman's word.
Is she still an ambassador?
She was an ambassador.
And she's not anymore?
She's not, no, please. She was a political appointee.
Political appointee?
Yes, please.
I understand that jargon, however. I wish I knew her name to mention it. I wish I knew, I wish I knew her name to mention so that the whole world would know that she has your laptop. But I will leave it at that. Now, let me go to, the next infraction is on.
Chairperson, Chairlady, if you wish, I will divulge the name. If Chairlady gives me the go-ahead.
I'm sorry?
If Chairlady will give me the go-ahead, I will pronounce the name.
Okay, let's move on, sir. We'll mention her name later. And then embarrassed. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen zero nine. Honorable Yawenim will take care of that one.
Honorable Chair, this infraction is in respect of remittances not accounted for. And this relates to the same special operations under the, yeah. It's special operations, so since it's a national security issue, I think we can.
Is it under you?
Yeah.
No, please.
Under research?
Yes, please.
Under research, yeah.
Yes, sir.
Research Department, then we will leave it. The next infraction is on paragraph seventeen thirteen. Honorable Akwesi Kuneudu will handle that one. Seventeen thirteen.
Thank you, Chair. So this infraction has to do with double payment of freight allowances. This was at the New York Mission to thirteen of ten thousand dollars and fifty. So the auditors noted that one Fred Bogney, a former minister, who was recalled to base and departed from New York in March twenty twenty-three, was paid double allowance for vehicle freight and personal effects amounting to ten thousand dollars and fifty on January twenty-four, twenty twenty-two. However, on twenty-second February twenty twenty-three, he was paid the same amount of ten thousand dollars and fifty for freight, making a total of twenty thousand one hundred. The auditors recommended that Chief Director should recover the unearned allowance of ten thousand and fifty dollars. Where are we in terms of the recovery?
Thank you, honorable, and, Mr. Chair, if I may, it's, this involves the Research Department. So I kindly ask permission to leave that to the Research Department.
Chief Director, this is becoming an issue.
Yes, please.
When you lump all these monies together, it is so much money.
Yes, please.
Respectfully, we need to find a way to address this issue. We cannot hide under Research Department. We are not speaking to it, Research Department, we are not giving even a simple name. So Chief Director, moving forward, respectfully, let us put systems in place where, one, we will not have staff being paid double salaries. And then once the auditor general sees this and cites you, you come and say, "You can't speak to it because they are research staff." We need to find a way around this thing. So that moving forward, we will not have these infractions, because these are all monies belonging to the state. Any other issue, research department. Then it should move to reset the national security. Then we know that these are national security issues that shouldn't appear under the Ministry of Foreign Affairs. But I have an issue with the double salaries. Because whether you are research, uh, you work under the research department or under Ministry of Foreign Affairs, you are not supposed to earn double salary. So you working at the research department does not make it right for you to receive double salaries. So Chief Director, respectfully, let us put systems in place where you work together with the research department to avoid some of these infractions, because they're embarrassing.
Yes, Madam Chair, uh, I take that forward, and I would engage with the research department on that. Thank you very much for your advice.
Honorable Edem. Uh, you, uh, the next infraction is on uh one seventeen sixteen.
Thank you, Mister Chair, for the opportunity. And uh, the seventeen sixteen. The auditors, it has to do with embezzlement of statutory deductions to the tune of eight thousand and eighty-six euros. The audit revealed control weaknesses in cash disbursement processes at the mission between the period of twenty, November twenty nineteen and March twenty twenty-one. The audit noted that during the same period, the former accounting officer, Mister Cafui Kofi Popo, made rent deductions-
Mister Popo, are you here with us? Is Mister Popo here with us?
Okay. Yeah, so Mister Popo-
Hold on.
Okay.
Mister Popo, if you are here with us, uh, we'd be very happy for you to come up here and sit here and maybe answer directly. This one, we will not allow the Chief Director to answer. Mister Clark, if you can swear him in. Mister Popo, have you been sworn in? Okay, so.
Made rent deductions totaling, made rent deductions totaling fourteen thousand six hundred and four point three four euros from the salaries of home-based officers without accounting for the deductions. Again, between November twenty nineteen and March twenty twenty-one, you made cash deductions totaling four hundred and, no, seventeen thousand and twenty point six one euros from the salaries of local staff for the payment of tax, social security, and health insurance without accounting for the deductions. The cash deductions were also paid from the mission's Czech Crown Bank account for the same purpose. The total embezzled amount is thirty-one thousand six hundred and twenty-four point nine five euros. Again, as at March twenty twenty-five, Mister Cafui Kofi Popo had refunded a total of twenty-one thousand sixty-six point six four United States dollars, or eighteen thousand five hundred and thirty-eight point six four euros and five thousand euros, bringing the total recovery to twenty-three thousand five hundred and thirty-eight point six four euros, leaving a balance of eight thousand eighty-six point three one to be recovered. Per the recommendation of the auditor general, the Chief Director is to help us recover that amount of eight thousand and eighty-six euros. Since you are here yourself, can you tell us when you make that payment of the balance?
Please, uh, the amount has been fully recovered, please. I've finished reading.
Auditors, can you confirm if the amount has been fully recovered?
Honorable, please, I can confirm that the amount of eight thousand and eighty-six has been fully recovered.
Mister Chairman, I would want to find out from Mister, from the Chief Director, if he is aware that per section ninety-six of the Public Financial Management Act twenty sixteen, Act nine two one, beyond recovery, an officer that is found to have misappropriated funds in violation of this act is equally liable for summary conviction to a term of imprisonment?
Yes, please, I am aware.
So Mister Chairman, I want to find out from the Chief Director what he has done so far about this issue beyond asking Mister Kofi Popo to refund the amount indicated in the report.
Uh, Mister, thank you very much, Mister Kofi Popo. When the issue came up, a task force was sent to the mission to investigate and to ensure that we have the facts available to us so that the proper um uh measures can be taken against him. Now, when they came back, they came back with a report which was uh the, the uh, the, which formed the basis of a committee that made recommendations, and we sent the, the report to the head of civil service and subsequently to the um Public Services Commission. And the Public Services Commission uh came out to the measure of demotion. So the officer was demoted, he was suspended, and after he's suspended, he was demoted by, I think, two steps. So his due date for uh promotion was, was passed, and uh he was asked to refund the entire amount. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, my last question. Okay, uh, let me, uh, let Mister Chairman take over.
Uh, Mister Chief Director. Um, the, this thing happened because of weak, weakness in um controls. Have these uh weaknesses been uh resolved?
Uh, thank you very much, Mister Chair. Uh, I, I think we can all imagine how embarrassing it is for an institution to be faced with an issue such as this. We have done uh two things, if not three. The first was to take the preliminary step of sending a team to identify the problem. And once it was done, we uh ensured that the officers, the officer there was removed. And uh we set in, we set in place a system where the, we realized that there was a supervisory control also that was weak. And so the uh head of chanceries of all the missions, and not just that mission, were asked, were tasked to ensure that anything, any such weaknesses uh that took place under their supervision was heavily sanctioned. Uh, we have uh trained and double-trained officers being posted to the various missions in such a way that with every, every month or so, we are constantly supervising and ensuring that we have video checks on their accounts. We constantly have uh communication with them via video. They should be sending their accounts in every month. And so these are checked and double-checked. So the, we have, we have uh, we have double-checked all the systems just to ensure that it doesn't occur.
Thank you very much, sir. The next infraction is on paragraph twelve twenty-one. Cash withdrawal not accounted for, and that will be uh seventeen twenty-one. And that will be in the notice.
Thank you very much, Mister Chairman. Chief Director, I think I will take a cue from what the chairman said. This also accounts to weak internal control systems where um the likes of Sakrata and Mister Cafui Kofi Popo took advantage of and withdrew, withdrew cash which they couldn't account for. Uh, if I go back to his says that, I want to find out what are the measures that you've taken now to mitigate this risk?
Thank you very much, and uh now, as I indicated, I sincerely believe that uh at the heart of the matter uh is honesty and transparency of officers. Now this, uh, it's, we try very hard to ensure that it's only the officers that have been sanctioned and passed to have been above board in terms of their transparency and the honesty that they have exhibited, who are posted to our missions to man their accounts. Uh, but we, we have, uh, we have set up training. Of course, we have a training institute at the Foreign Service Institute, and the Foreign Service Institute is helping us uh to train and retrain the officers that are being posted outside of the country.
Chief Director, it is not just about the training. See, if we know the checks are in place, it will help people, I mean, stop some of these things. So, um, we are pleading with you, um, the PFM Act and all the other regulations that can help uh the, the missions function properly. It's like when they leave Ghana, they think they are no more under our financial laws. So respectfully, if you can put those systems in place to allow the system to work, uh, using the various regulations and laws that we have, I think that will go a long way to also help in this regard.
Madam Chair, thank you very much for that. I take it that all these are helping us as, as an institution to build up our institution. If I may add, previously, we, we have never, as we are doing now, we have never uh provided as much budget as we are now providing to our internal audits uh departments. And we have increased the uh budget going to the internal audit because, of course, we want to avoid such infractions. And of course, we are also building, rebuilding our institution. Thank you very much for the suggestion.
Mister Chief Director, I want to find out if uh Mrs. Sakrata Lamini Jesu, the head of chancery.
Is she around? No, please.
Okay, and our own, our own friend, former accounting officer, Mister Cafui Kofi Popo.
Yes, please.
Have refunded the fifty-eight thousand euros.
Um, the, out of the amount of fifty-eight, I believe, if I get the figure right, amount of thirty-one has been refunded so far. Balance of- Yeah, yes, please, uh, he's refunding, and uh he's refunded two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven of the amount. But uh we, there is a, a plan, a payment plan, where the amount is being deducted from at source. So uh there is a regular payment that is being deducted from this so that over a period uh between now and the next year, the total amount would have been recovered into public chest.
So, how much again has been recovered of this, that, uh, fifty-eight thousand? Yeah, fifty-eight thousand euros.
Please, it's uh two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven, please.
Two thousand?
Yes, please.
Out of the fifty-eight?
Yes, please. Noted, it's been deducted at source, and that has been fully recovered out of the payment that is being made and-
Thousand you, uh, euros. How much are you collecting in a month? And how many months is it going to take to pay off this amount?
Um, yes, I defer, I defer to the finance section, please, to answer that, with your permission, please.
And adding to it, I see-
Five thousand.
Lamimi Idrisu, is she involved in this? The head of chancery. Chief Director.
Please.
There's a head of, uh, head of chancery also. Is she involved? Or is it just, how, how involved is she?
Yes, uh, the, the, she was head of chancery at the time that Kofi Popo was accounting officer. So uh in the, in the monies that are expended or any monies that are taken out of the accounts, you would, it requires two signatures. So the head of chancery and the accounting officer. So to that extent, she is involved.
So then she confirmed that she signed with, but why is she not here?
She's uh currently in a mission in India.
Yes, and she wasn't informed about this?
No, she, um, the, the disciplinary committee, uh, when it went, they came out to the report that as far as they were concerned, and as far as their investigations went, she was only responsible for the VAT refunds, because the VAT was involved. And uh she was involved to the extent of ten thousand euros, which she has fully paid.
The VAT refunds?
Yes, please.
When you say VAT, no, please explain, because um she's been implicated here.
Yes, please.
And so we want it to be on record, the role she played. Because she's not here, Mister Kofi Popo is here, he can speak to, um, to the matter. But the, the head of chancery is not here, and her name has been cited here. And so we want you to tell us the exact role you claim she played in this.
Uh, as I indicated, Madam Chair, she was uh head of chancery at the time when Kofi Popo was accounting officer. It takes two for any expenditures in a mission to be made. And so uh with every expenditure made, she would have to be involved in the signing of the check or of the retrieval of monies.
So, uh, Madam Chair, I heard the Chief Director say the lady in question has made some payment to the tune of about ten thousand euros. You also said earlier that our friend here, Kofi Popo. Yes, he's my friend. Yeah, there's Kofi in the name. Kofi um has had deductions made uh to about two thousand euros now. Now, the entire infraction that the two of them are liable to is fifty-eight thousand. So can you confirm the outstanding amount of liability here for us? Because I read some inconsistencies here.
Chief Director. Okay, okay. Thank you, Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, we may refer to the earlier infraction which concerns Mister Kofi Popo in the sum of thirty-one thousand, which he started paying. So he is paying double infraction. So the total payment he has made so far has actually defrayed the first infraction, which is the thirty-one thousand. And then the excess is the two thousand, which is being used to settle the-
And then the excess is the two thousand, which is being used to settle the second infraction. That is how come, out of the fifty-eight thousand for which he's supposed to refund half, we have only two thousand three hundred and eighty-seven euros being the amount he has paid so far. He was combining both figures and refunding them together.
He took monies that were not supposed to have been taken. And so let's not justify this, that, that is the reason why he's paid just two thousand. Because he took out thirty-one thousand euros. And one may ask, what did he use the thirty-one thousand euros for? That he can't go for it to pay for, I mean, the, the deductions he made on the home staff's account and salaries. So let's not justify this. The auditor says, can you throw more light on, on this, the issue of the ten thousand, this and that? So that we are all clear.
Madam Chair, whilst they are throwing light on it, I'd just like them to add another dimension, which is that in the auditor general's recommendation, the chief director is supposed to retrieve this amount with interest. So if you have gone to agree on a payment plan, i.e. deductions monthly, tell us where we are at the deductions, what quantum interest you've calculated, such that this will not occasion a loss to the state. Otherwise, with this statistical, you are just telling us you can go embezzle money, literally steal money, and then there will be a payment plan for you, no interest. That's not good for the state. Please tell us.
Thank you, Chair. Honorable Chair, currently the officer is paying three thousand a month. Three thousand dollars a month, which is on record that he had been. The interest has not been worked on by the, the auditor general for the officer.
The auditor general doesn't need to work out any interest. The auditor general has recommended that chief director should retrieve this amount with interest at prevailing Bank of Ghana rates. It's not by auditor general who should tell you what it is. Chief Director should tell us what it is and tell us what the interest component of that amount he has paid. Otherwise, Mr. Chair, you would need to use your powers. The chief director is liable and he's here. We can't allow the taxpayers' money to be taken like that.
Honorable member, if you read paragraph seventeen twenty-three, it says the chief director should recover the total amount, which is over here, with interest at the prevailing Bank of Ghana rates from the former head of chancery named here and the former accounting officer. And same paid into auditor general's recovery account at the Bank of Ghana, failing which the chief director should pay. So it's just that simple. Chief Director, you are on the horse seat. If you don't collect the interest, we'll haul you back here to pay. And you pay interest upon the interest.
I note that, please. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, the, my question is, you see, if it is any of us politicians who are here who have been in the news, they will be bashing it left and right. But when civil servants commit this crime and then we try to justify it. I mean, even, even for me, I mean, the officer shouldn't have been here. He should have been arrested.
Mr. Chair, what's your ruling now?
My ruling is the chief director should collect the amount with interest. So whatever, oh, immediately.
So let's give, give him time, let's be sure.
Whatever, whatever payment that he's paying should include an interest component of it. From. But he've already started the payment, right?
Yes.
So there should be, the payment plan, it should include an interest on it.
Mr. Chair, right from here, I would go and work diligently and work out the interest.
Exactly. Otherwise, you can, otherwise you pay.
Yes, sir. It will be a very unpleasant experience.
Thank you.
But I will do so. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, so I would like to find out from the chief director, when the last payment was made?
The last payment was made in July, please. It's made on a monthly basis. Thank you, please.
Our auditors, could you confirm that monthly payment is being made?
Honorable, please, I can confirm that monthly payment is being made. But I want to make a correction.
Yes.
You've been saying the amount involved is fifty-eight. Please, it's not fifty-eight thousand. It's sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three. We have five thousand euros, as up to sixty-three thousand, three hundred and thirty-three.
Chief Director, you are aware of this?
Yes, please, noted.
Okay. Because with me, if you move to any other ministry, I'm coming after you there. If you go, go there with him.
Yes, sir. It's not that I have anything against you, but I wouldn't want to, to have you at my heels all the time like that.
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity. Chairman, the, the head of chancery is being sent to a different mission.
Chief, Chief Director, you have.
Been reassigned. Two people must sign to take the money. So how did he take the money alone? The chief director said that two people signed to take money from the chancery account. But the woman, the head of chancery that has been reassigned, Popo has been demoted. What punishment did they give to the head of chancery?
Chief, we are waiting.
Mr. Chair, I think there's something that needs to be clarified. She wasn't reassigned per se. But as I indicated, there was a committee that was set up that went to investigate a year before the auditors went there to make the findings. Now, on the basis of the findings of the committee that was set up, she wasn't fully exonerated, but her liability was not found to be financial. So at the time, Kufipopo, when he was confronted with the facts, owned up. And so the committee came back with that report, which was forwarded to the public services. And the public services subsequently made the recommendations of demotion. The external auditors went a year after, by which time the processes had been set in motion where she was. Yes, please. So that is how it, it happened. And the report just came, just a, a month or two ago.
Thank you, Chair. If I had the chief director right, he said initially that the head of chancery has been made to pay some amount. I think some thousand, ten thousand euros or so. But now, from what he's saying, that the head of chancery, after the investigation committee went there, the findings was that she was not implicated financially. Her liability was not a financial liability. If it was not a financial liability, why is she paying? So I need further clarification.
I apologize for not, for my lack of clarity. I am not saying she was not at all financially liable. But there was a VAT component which should have been been taken to the bank, which was not. So to that extent, it was twenty-two something thousand, which they divided equally. And she paid hers immediately. But the committee did not find any further. Yes, thank you very much.
All right, Chief Director, let's move on. The next paragraph, the next infraction is on paragraph seventeen twenty-four. And it's under Honorable Duke William Oforiata.
Mr. Chair, the next infraction happened at the Pretoria mission. The auditors chanced upon a report which indicated that the consulate was charging an extra fee of a thousand seven hundred rand, as administrative fees, after paying the approved visa fees online. The extra fee charged was not being accounted to the High Commission, which is the supervisory authority. The auditors also noted that the mission's records showed that the council had processed seven hundred and two applications for the period and the review. As such, the monies involved was one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred rand of equivalent of sixty-six thousand, three hundred and two thousand US dollars. Recommendations of the auditor. We recommend that the chief director should ensure that the head of chancery recovers the unapproved administrative fees of the rand one million, one hundred ninety-three thousand, four hundred charged on the seven hundred and two applications from the Honorable Council and pay same into the auditor general's recovery account at Bank of Ghana and also activate the general guidelines policy by terminating the appointment of the Honorary Counselor. So I'd like to ask, Chief Director, what is the status of the recovery of this funds?
Thank you, Honorable. Mr. Chair, the ministry requested a Ghana mission in Pretoria to prevail upon the Honorary Counselor to refund the unapproved fees collected. The demands over time have not resulted in a refund. The ministry therefore refused to renew the mandate of the Honorary Counselor. And this was intended to compel him to refund the amount, but that also did not yield results. The final decision on this matter now is that we have formally terminated all dealings with him. And the mission in Pretoria has been requested to retrieve all value books in the custody of the Honorary Counselor. But the Honorary Counselor is not recognized and we have not renewed his mandate. Thank you. Please, if I may also add, we have forwarded a letter to the Attorney General and Minister for Justice to request for assistance in the area of reimbursement of funds and cessation of illegal administrative charges at the Honorary Counselor's level in Cape Town.
Honorable Chair, I want to touch on a very important matter relating to the discussions in the last ten minutes or so, which relates clearly to embezzlement of public funds. I think the Ministry of Foreign Affairs has been in the news for some very bad reasons in a recent past. And much of it is being revealed to us around this table this afternoon. At the heart of it, I want to know what measures, and this question, Honorable Chair, is to the chief director, what measures, control measures, have you put in place to first and foremost prevent the embezzlement before we now begin to marshal, you know, tax forces and the rest of it to go investigate and, you know, now portion or recommend repayment plan, et cetera, et cetera? What preventive measures have you put in place to prevent such things? Because foreign missions, they are not here in Ghana under our nose. They're far away and, and they're expensive to, you know, uncover such things.
Chief?
Yes, Madam Chair. Madam Chair, the, I believe I indicated some of the measures earlier on. And the one that I believe we haven't implemented to the fullest as we are doing now is to be sending and to strengthen our internal audit mechanism where the internal auditors go around to the missions on a yearly basis to, to check whether the controls in place are actually working. It's, it's not always possible when we are so far at headquarters to be checking except to be having video calls with them and to be calling the heads of chancelleries and the accounting officers and to be querying them to understand what they are doing on a day-to-day basis. We are also examining the possibility of sending external auditors, internal auditors to the missions so that they can be posted to the missions and ensure that in addition to the, to the head of chancery and the accounting officer, there is another layer of supervision, which is internal audit unit at the missions. And the, at selected missions, just to ensure that we maximize on the, the capacities of these institutions.
Thank you very much, Chief Director.
And thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
You are finally discharged.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Honorable members, we've come to the end of sitting today. We are, tomorrow, the ministries that we are expecting to come will be Ministry of Defence, Office of Government Machinery, and then Ministry of Energy and Ministry of Roads and Highways. We expect to start ten o'clock on the dot. And we are adjourned until then.